To the January 21st, 2021 meeting of the Baltimore County Planning Board, I'd like to call this to order. My name is Nancy Hafford, and I'm the Chair of the Baltimore County Planning Board, and I'll start with a roll call to account for the members that are present. After you hear your name, please say aye. Mr. Schweitzer? Mr. Schweitzer? Ms. Panero? Mr. Hartman?
Aye.
Mr. Halepka? Mr. Halepka?
I'm not hearing anything. What's going on?
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Ms. Wilson?
Aye.
Mr. McGinnis? Mr. Heckman?
Aye.
Mr. Heinel? Mr. Perlow?
Aye.
Mr. Warren? If you're not speaking, if you mute, please. Mr. Warren? Mr. Caligari? Thank you. Please join me? Yes.
I don't know if you called my name, but I might have been muted at the time. I just wanted to make sure you got my name.
I do, Mr. Schweitzer. Thank you very much. I would like to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one mission unbroken, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Before we start our agenda, if you're not speaking, if you could please mute because there's a lot of background noise. Thank you. I appreciate that. Before we begin today's agenda, I'd like to introduce the new Planning Director and Secretary of the Board, Mr. Steve Lafferty. Steve was just confirmed by the Baltimore County Council to lead the Department of Planning, and Steve successfully served as the County Chief Sustainable Officer. And Steve, I just want to thank you for all the good work you've done for Baltimore County for so many years. I had the pleasure to work with you as our delegate for a long time, and you really put everything you have into it, so I know you're going to do the same as the head of the Planning Department. Steve, would you like to say a few words?
Nancy, thank you. Thank you very much, and good afternoon, everyone. I know a number of you fortunately, and will be honored to serve and work with the Planning Board in the days, weeks, months to come. Nancy, I can only thank you for the very kind words and for all the work that you've done in the community over the years to make Towson such a strong place that it is. As Nancy said, I was just recently confirmed, so I'm spending a lot of time getting to know the staff and the policies and programs. And I know as a former Planning Board member, how important all of you are to the process. And I think increasingly, we'll be relying on you as a sounding board for the master plan and to ensure that all of the plans that actually we're grappling with are integrated into this long-term vision. So I know that you have a full agenda today with the county executive as well. So with that, I'll just say once again, thank you for the introduction. I look forward to working with all of you, and always feel free to reach out to me. Thank you, Nancy.
Thank you so very much, Steve. There, the county ex... Oh, there, we welcome right... There he came on. We're very grateful. Mr. Davis, is there any changes to the agenda?
No, Madam Chair, there's no changes to the agenda as published.
Okay. In the January 15th email, you received draft minutes of the January 7th, 2021 meeting. Has everyone had an opportunity to review the minutes? If there are any corrections or additions? If not, can I entertain a motion to accept the minutes as circulated?
Motion. Second.
All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Thank you. Well, and right now, we are very, very honored to have our county executive Johnny Ochesky Jr. to join us today to introduce the Board to the capital improvement program process. He will describe describing the fiscal perimeters and highlighting points of particular interest to the Board and outlining his priorities for the FY 2022-2027 capital budget and program. Now, please welcome our county executive, Johnny O.
Thank you, Madam Chair. It is a pleasure to be with all of you today, and congratulations to you, Nancy, on the appointment. Thank you for serving alongside the other members. It's really great to have all of you serving on this critical board. I appreciate the opportunity to kick off your review of the fiscal '22 capital budget, as well as the '23 to '27 CIP that's ahead. You know, when I came before you last year, our county was in a very much different position than we were today. We closed together and inherited $81 million structural deficit, and we put this county's fiscal house in order. We maintained our AAA bond rating, and we made the necessary investments to strengthen our communities. And Kate, are you on... I think we may have a slide deck as well, Madam Chair, as I'm talking, so we'll get that caught up. But as we began our second round of annual budget town halls early in fiscal '20, early in the year 2020, we were really positioned to do a lot of big things in Baltimore County because we were on that stronger financial footing and because of how we've continued to engage residents and work with you across Baltimore County. But as we had those conversations, COVID-19 changed everything for so many of us. It really changed our way of life. In March 2020, the county reported its first case of COVID-19. About a year later, we have now seen over 42,000 confirmed cases of COVID-19, and we've lost over 900 of our residents who have died as a result of the pandemic. And we also know that countless residents have also lost their jobs and lost businesses they've spent their entire lives building. So all of us, no matter our circumstances, have been tested to our limits in this crisis. It's really threatened our way of life, but I also know that we've been resilient in this time. We found new ways to get connected and to support each other. I want to applaud the businesses that moved to the curbside or to the computer screen, classes who have gone online, and parents and teachers who have done all that they can. I couldn't be more proud of our residents, our businesses, and our employees here in Baltimore County who've kept moving our county forward. And I'm really proud of, despite all of the challenges, that we've found ways to really strongly support all of our residents here in Baltimore County. Together, we've brought government, the business community, nonprofits, and residents to step up and provide unprecedented relief and support for those who've been so cruelly impacted by the COVID-19 virus. We continue to do all that we can to keep our residents safe and informed, and protecting the health and well-being will always be a top priority. When the pandemic, we moved quickly. We stood up food distributions each Saturday and have now distributed with our partners over 12 million meals. We established free testing sites and put out millions of dollars on the street to support both businesses and residents alike. And even as this pandemic has raged, our everyday work has continued, and we've pushed towards those goals established in our Enterprise Strategic Plan and Transition Report. I'm proud that we are leading a government that is open, accessible, and transparent, and more so than I think ever before. Values like equity and inclusion are being instilled in our culture, and we've accomplished an awful lot in a short period of time. In addition to closing that inherited deficit that I mentioned, we were able to fund education at record levels. We were able to pass an unprecedented ethics package to include the county's first-ever inspector general. Kelly Madigan's doing a great job. We put our first budget online, and since then, we've added open checkbooks. So residents can now go and see our expenditure down to the contract level, which is really providing that unprecedented level of transparency into how Baltimore County operates. After last summer, there were calls for justice after the murder of George Floyd, and we passed bipartisan police reforms to improve accountability and promote more equitable policing. We're excited to be standing up the Towson Circulator to begin this fall, free for the tens and hundreds of thousands of people who will ride it. We've made our county more sustainable. We restarted glass recycling. We began working on our greenhouse gas inventory and a county-wide climate action plan. We've brought youth together at roundtables and as a climate working group. And in March 2020, we started an innovative new program that converts methane gas to renewable energy at Eastern Sanitarium and Field. This offsets an estimated 21 million kilowatt hours. As he had a moment in the sun before, I want to just thank and recognize our new Director of Planning, Steve Lafferty, for his leadership on those issues, and also wish him well as he works with you in his new role as the Director of Planning. If you can't tell, I'm very proud of the work that we've done, and yet, all that's still ahead as we work together. And you know, as we think about economic recovery, it's really critical that we put a capital budget front and center that invests in our communities and strengthens our county. So every two years, obviously, we have voters approve our general obligation bonds, which is the primary source for funding many of our capital projects. And this past November, we thanked the voters of Baltimore County for approving the nearly $400 million of bond referendums on the ballot. You'll see the slide there, but included is $200 million for school construction, $35 million for wrecked parks projects, $46 million for government-building-related activities, and $4 million for land preservation. That $200 million for school construction is not by accident. Education continues to be my top priority. And in our first two years, we provided back-to-back record funding for public education, and we have prefunded over $240 million in shovel-ready shovel-ready school construction projects that are just waiting for the state match. And so at the start of this session, we're hopeful that we can have the Built to Learn Act take effect, providing and unlocking nearly half a billion dollars of shovel-ready construction across Baltimore County, finishing the Schools for Our Future Program so that we can turn to the future beyond that and meet other critical pressing needs. Meeting those needs happens because we join the school system. We joined BCPS to develop, initiate, and implement a collaborative process to address those long-term school construction needs. Using those recommendations that are coming out from the multi-year Improvement Plan for All, and I think "for all" is a critical part of that, we'll be developing, in partnership with you and our partners, a capital program that maximizes state funding and identifies those priorities based on enrollment projections, capacity, national adequacy. I think it's important that others know, because I believe that you all have... It's our schedule to get briefing from Canada Design as you perform your capital review. They are a national expert and very, very well-renowned for doing this type of work. We're very excited to have them. And their work is split in two phases. First, we're doing Phase 1, which has reviewed our hospital buildings and was shared publicly last fall. Phase 2 will review all of our elementary, middle, and special schools. When it's complete, these phases will be merged together to give us a comprehensive, full report in the fall of 2021, providing what should be an equitable 10-year strategy to address all of the needs at all of our schools across Baltimore County. Some additional highlights in the referendum just approved was a record amount of $35 million for the wrecked parks to address facility upgrade that are needed across Baltimore County. We doubled the previous referendum for land preservation, and that $4 million will provide greater and additional opportunities for preservation purchases, which will also help with sustainability goals. The $55 million in public works projects includes over $22 million to continue the record funding and road resurfacing across Baltimore County. And among the $46 million for government building, that includes $6 million for the new Wilkins Avenue Police Precinct, as well as $18 million for a long-planned Sparres Point Fire Station at Trade Point Atlantic in eastern Baltimore County. I believe that you have a robust schedule of capital budget hearings with county department heads and leadership from both BCPS and CCBC. And this year, you should notice some changes to how we're actually doing that capital budget process. Some of those specific changes include that more departments will be appearing before you to discuss their capital needs. Departments applying land fiscal... to fiscal '22 projects, rather than providing an example of how funds are historically spent. And we will also be asking them to provide an increase... An increased, excuse me, focus on issues of both sustainability and resilience. In addition to those changes, we're also continuing to approve, improve our operating budget process, as we have since taking over these past two years. These changes have been providing our department heads and employees an opportunity to actually participate in a much more transparent and meaningful way in budget development. I look forward to hearing your recommendations for the fiscal '22 capital, as well as the fiscal '23 to '27 CIP. I want to thank all of the Board members for volunteering your time and your energy. Your work here is truly helping us chart the future of Baltimore County. Relatedly, I look forward to working with all of you on the master plan, the long-term 10-year plan, and any number of issues in the years ahead. So thank you again for your service. I'm grateful for your willingness to serve. And I want to thank you again, Madam Chair, for your outstanding leadership and for taking this on. Looking forward for all... Working with you for all of the ways we're going to move Baltimore County forward together in the years ahead. So thanks for the opportunity, and happy to take any questions.
Does anyone have any questions for the county executive? We greatly appreciate your joining us today, and we thank you and your staff and the Planning Board staff for everything they've done to keep Baltimore County moving forward. No questions? All right. We thank you, and have a good evening, and health and safety to you and your family.
And to you and everyone on the Board. Thank you again. Thanks, everybody. Thanks.
Thank you, county executive. Okay, the first item on our agenda, we're going to have Mrs. Erin Starley from the Department of Public Works to present the Water and Sewer Master Plan Emergency Amendment Cycle 2020 EM-1 petitions. I'd like to call for a separate motion to set a public... Oh, after... When you're finished. Are you ready to go?
Hi, good afternoon. I'm ready. There's a couple of slides. If Chris could take a second to load those.
Chris, do you have them? There you go.
All right. So, good afternoon, everyone. I'm Erin McKenna Straley from the Water Design Section of the Department of Public Works. I'm introducing the Water Supply and Sewage Master Plan Emergency Amendment that we received from the Department of Environmental Protection and Sustainability to the Planning Board. Next slide. "Per the Executive Order of April 11th, 1990, Subsection F, in any case where the Directors of Public Works, Planning and Zoning, and Environmental Protection and Resource Management certify to the county executive that early action upon an amendment petition is required in the public interest or because of emergency, such petition shall be exempted from the regular cycle timeframe and shall be processed as quickly as possible. A copy of the executive order is included on Pages 3 and 4 of the staff report, which is available on DPW's website for viewing and download. The Directors of DPW, Planning, and EPS have all signed a memo to the county executive certifying that early action is required, and a copy of the memo is also included in the staff report on Page 5." Next slide. "The Baltimore County Groundwater Management Staff conducted a sanitary survey on February 25th, 2020 of several properties located near the intersection of North Point Road and Miller's Island Road in Edgemere to assess the need to extend public sewage." Next slide. "The results of the investigation indicated evidence that there are problems with the current sewage disposal systems at several properties and that new private disposal systems are not feasible. It was recommended to DPW that the public sanitary sewer system be extended as part of a health project. Additional surrounding properties are included in the amendment, but not with the health project, as they were identified by EPS as having soils that are not conducive to an onsite sewage disposal system and will most likely require a connection to public service in the future. All nine properties are located inside the metropolitan district, and eight are located outside of the Urteil. 2901 Bowers Farm Road is located partially inside and outside the Urteil. Staff are recommending a sewer map designation change from S7 (no public service) to S3 (capital facilities area) for all properties in the amendment." Next slide. "As DPW is... this amendment, we have the opportunity to correct some inconsistencies in the water designations in Edgemere. Many properties included in the amendment are designated W7 (no plant service), but have a connection to public water and active accounts for Baltimore City. An existing 12-inch water main runs along Miller's Island Road, and an existing 16-inch water main runs along North Point Road. These water mains were installed prior to the creation of the Urteil, which may account for as to why they were installed in a W7 designated area. Again, all nine properties are located inside the metropolitan district, and eight are located outside of the Urteil. 2901 Bowers Farm Road is located partially inside and outside of the Urteil. Staff are recommending a water map designation change from W7 (no public service) to W3 (capital facilities areas) for all properties except for 8210 North Point Road, as that property already has a map designation of W1. Any future connections to the public water system by property owners included in this amendment will be at their expense. And as a reminder, the amendment petition process is not an approval of a service connection to the public water and/or sewer system, but a request to change the land use or map designation for a property owner to begin a separate process for connection with the county. Again, the staff report for the emergency amendment is available electronically on the DPW website for viewing and download. And per the request of the Planning Board, I'll present more detailed information regarding the emergency amendments at the public hearing, hopefully scheduled February 4th. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions today and in the coming weeks, if you've had some time to review the document."
Thank you, Ms. McKenna Straley. Does any of the Board have any questions for her regarding this matter?
Nancy, it's Kathy. What is the zoning in this location? I'm sorry, did you hear me?
In what location?
At 8100 North Point Road, 81... These addresses. What is the existing zoning?
So the zoning varies for each property? And I'm sorry, which address did you say specifically?
I mean, they're all pretty close together.
Yeah, they each still have some differences in the zoning.
Okay.
These are listed in the staff report. But if you have a specific address, I can look it up.
Okay, let's take 8208 Miller's Island Road.
Okay. That zoning is RC5 and BL.
Okay, RC5 and BL. Okay, so several of these are RC. Is that correct?
I believe so.
Okay, thank you. Sure.
Thank you. Does anyone else have any questions?
Paul Hartman. Just boiling it down, it appears that, to me, that the sewer is a health issue and the water is just changing it to what is actually there. In other words, there is water service to this area, but it's not correctly noted as such. Is that the basic gist of this?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, thank you.
This is Derek Johnson. Question I have is, are these the only properties that you've identified? Are there more that you think are going to be involved in this?
I think that's pretty extensively and kind of broadened the scope outside of the original investigation. So we believe this is the complete list at this time.
Thank you.
Howard.
Okay, go ahead, Howard.
I guess my concern is, I understand that this is a health issue, but if we approve this and we basically have violated the Urteil at that point, something that we've talked about for years that we don't want to do, does this allow us in other parts of the county where somebody comes in and says, "My septic has failed," and you approved it here along North Point Road and Bowers Farm Road, "Why shouldn't you do it for me too, so I can tie in to the sewer?" I remember the swim club that we talked about last year. That was only so far away, but we should expand it another 100 or 200 feet. If we continue to always expand it under 200, 1,000 feet to take care of failing septic systems, and I understand that for concern health-wise, do we open ourselves up to the Urteil almost not to have any practice that it's always had to us in the past? That's my only concern.
Any other questions? So, thank you very much, Ms. McKenna Straley. Right now, I guess we should take a vote on who's in favor and who's opposed. I'm just going to call your name, and then if you'd let me know. Mr. Schweitzer?
I'm in favor. Aye.
Ms. Panero?
What is exactly voting on? Is this to have the hearing, or...
Yes, to have the hearing.
Great, thanks.
Ms. Panero?
I support.
Mr. Hartman?
Aye.
Mr. Halepka?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson? Ms. Wilson?
It's Wolfson, and it's aye.
Okay, thank you. Mr. McGinnis?
Aye.
Mr. Heckman?
Aye.
Mr. Heinel's not present. Mr. Perlow?
Aye, I am present. I'm present.
Oh, you are? Okay, sorry. And then, Mr. Warren?
Aye.
And Mr. Caligari?
Aye.
Okay, then, can I hear a motion to call a public meeting? Go ahead.
Move that a public hearing be set for Thursday, February 4th, 2021, at 4:30 p.m. We're going to receive comments and concerns from the citizens of Baltimore County.
Thank you very much. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, the second item on our agenda is to introduce proposed annual revisions of the Basic Services Maps pursuant to Section 4A-02 of the Baltimore County Zoning Regulations. Mr. Jeff Paluso and his staff from the Department of Public Works are with us this evening to present to the Board. We... Please welcome Mr. Paluso.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair and fellow Planning Board members. And thank you. Erin works in one of my design groups, and I wanted to thank her for a great job in the emergency amendment. So I'm here today, as you said, I'm Jeff Paluso, I'm the Acting Chief of Urban Engineering and Construction. And I'm here today to introduce the 2021 Basic Services Maps. As you said, Madam Chair, in accordance with Baltimore County's zoning regulations, Section 4A-02, Growth Management Section, the Department of Public Works evaluates these maps, the water, sewer, and transportation maps every year for deficiencies in the systems. Today, I'd like to introduce the Today, I'd like to introduce these three maps for consideration and approval. And as such, your approval serves as a recommendation to council. And I'm going to be brief today, and I got the impression that things were changed a little bit from Chris Davis's email that the hearing would be more of an in-depth presentation. So I'll be brief, and then, of course, if you have any questions, I'll answer those. So starting with the utility maps, our water map in itself, we did not identify any deficient areas, and that is no different than last year. My water system is fairly robust. Turning to our sewer, there's the water map, and there's this one. Okay, great. Thank you, Chris. So turning to the sewer map, there are five areas of concern. The two of those, one on the southwest side and one right basically at the corner on the northwest side are really controlled by the city and improvements of the sewer system in the city. The others, so there's three other areas of concern, and one deficient area out in Richland Manor. Notably, this map hasn't changed since last year, and I had planned on getting into more detail about each one of those areas of concern and deficient area during the hearing. Going forward to the transportation map, our transportation engineering group looked at the 35 intersections, signalized intersections that have a DE or F level service. Just wanted to note, COVID did affect even our rating system and the fact that five of these ratings, if, I'm sorry, five of these intersections, we were not able to study because of COVID and basically the traffic volumes aren't consistent for what they typically are. So that is, again, I was going to, I'm going to do a detailed discussion at the hearing. And I thank you for your time, and I look forward to discussing this in greater detail. I was wondering if any of the board members would have any questions at this time.
Yes, this is Derek Johnson. When you say that there are some concerns, I know you're going to go into it in depth. But what, can you give me kind of a synopsis of what you mean by some concerns and those areas in the first map that you were talking about? Maybe some generalities, similarities?
Yes, sir. So go back to that map. So an area of concern, so we, I'll go in a little bit more detail, and in fact, that the county is in a consent decree for our sewer system through EPA and MDE. So with that being said, many years ago, the county constructed what we call constructed sewer overflow areas. So when the sanitary system is overwhelmed, the sewer exits through a open pipe. And obviously, there's much health concerns in that open pipe going into a stream. So we've invested about $1.5 billion since 2005, when this consent decree went into place, to eliminate these sanitary overflows. So there's one, two, three, there's four areas, four of the five areas of concern are areas where we have constructed overflows. And as I briefly touched on, two of the overflows are related to city infrastructure that needs to be done under their consent decree. Unfortunately, their consent decree is on a different timeline than ours, and those two probably will not be eliminated for another five to 10 years. The other two overflow areas, one being on the west side, one being on the northeast side, are also areas that we have constructed overflows, and we are currently working, we have construction and monitoring at those locations, and we expect those to be eliminated in the next, I would say, two to three years. And, you know, just, I know that sounds like a long time, but there's many projects, many million-dollar projects that take a while to complete, and then, under the EPA mandate, we have to monitor our improvements for 12 to 18 months to verify that our improvements have corrected the problem. And then, at that point, we'll eliminate the overflow and that area of concern will go away. So I guess, so what's concerning is we don't want to allow development. We look at development, I guess, very carefully in these areas. So I guess maybe that's what you're looking for, maybe. The other area of concern up on Joppa and Seminary is an area of concern because there's an undersized pipe that needs to be replaced. And then, the deficient area is up in Richland Manor, which is up in the Perry Hall area, where it's the only area in the county that is handled by a a treatment plant that is not owned or is not owned by or not run by Baltimore City. So it's a county-run, very, very small treatment plant that treats that area, treats the sewage coming from that small sewer shed. We have plans to move forward. We have a consultant on board to look at how we can, or how we are going to eliminate that treatment plant as well as build a pumping station to bring that sewage down to another area.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Jeff, can you show how the deficient, the areas of concern overlay on the commercial revitalization areas?
So I know it's not very easy to see, but it is overlaid there. I think it's a, if you look at the legend, I believe it, there's the.
It would seem like it was on the next slide. There was.
It's here. If you look at the legend, there's the, I mean, I gotta make it larger on my side here. So the commercial revitalization area is like a pink crosshatch, and then there's a Towson Urban Center, which is like an orange crosshatch.
Sorry, I just can't see that.
Yeah, it's not, it's, you can't see it real well. I can see the Towson one, obviously, is in Towson, sort of basically right at the center of your screen.
Well, I guess my question is, are all of these areas of concern in commercial revitalization areas?
No.
Well, will there be?
They're outside of those areas.
Okay. It seemed like I saw a slide on the west side that showed the commercial revitalization area and the Security Boulevard area or the supporting area.
The designations are sewer sheds, so they really don't, you know, it's where the sewer shed is defined, not so much where the, if they overlap, they overlap, but it's how we define them is a sewer shed, not a revitalization area.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Is the details in a report available online if we want to look at it in more detail?
So the details, so there is a letter typically done for the water and sewer, and then there's a fairly detailed report from traffic engineering that I submitted with the maps. Does anyone else have any questions?
Sorry, thank you, Mr. Paluso. I appreciate you taking the time to do this. If there's no other questions, I'll call for a motion to set for a public hearing.
It is due to a hearing as specified under BTCR, section 4A02.3.1, set February 4, 2021, at 4:30 p.m. For the board to receive comments and concerns from citizens of Baltimore County to be considered in the deliberation vote at the February 18, 2021 meeting.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. Okay, the report for the January 14, 2021, meeting of the Landmark Preservation Commission. Mr. Davis, thank you for taking over that seat. Will you now share that report with us?
Yes, Madam Chair. So for the January 14, 2021, meeting of the Landmark Preservation Commission, the LPC voted to issue six certificates of appropriateness to the following properties. The Harris property located at 3604 Stony Brook Road in Fieldstone. Gruber property located at 504 Upland Road in Sudbrook Park. Chaminot property located at 215 Miller Camden Avenue in Lutherville. The Sims property located at 1007 Windsor Road in Sudbrook Park. The Stokowski property located at 214 Morris Avenue in Lutherville. And the Roberts property located at 5101 South Rolling Road in Relay. And I believe it's the Sims property as well, located at 1007 Windsor Road. And that's the conclusion.
Thank you very much, Mr. Davis. Can you please fill us in on legislation recently passed by the county council?
Yes, Madam Chair. There's one item on the legislation, and it's Resolution 152-20. It's a continuation of a state of emergency of an executive order 2020-002. And it's a resolution for the county council approving the continuation of a state of emergency declared by the county executive on March 13, 2020. The state of emergency declared by the county executive shall continue for 30 days from January 5, 2021, which will end on February 4, 2021, or until the county executive declares the end of the state of emergency, whichever comes first.
Thank you very much, Mr. Davis. Before we conclude, please note that the Planning Board will hold a virtual CIP meeting to hear agencies' presentations via a separate WebEx meeting today at 5:30. The WebEx link to the CIP meeting can be found on the Baltimore County Planning Board's website. Do I have a motion to adjourn this meeting?
Don't move.
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
We'll see, we'll see you all at 5:30.